Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 6th City Council Meeting for the City of Los Manos. But this time, could I please have Pastor Glenn Bowman come forward from the Church of Christ for the opening prayer?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for being able to gather together as a community. We thank you so much for the leaders that you've given us and blessed us with. We pray that you'll just continue to give them wisdom and understanding for every matter concerning the city. We thank you for the new people and homes and businesses that you're bringing here, and just for making our lives so beautiful, Lord. And we just really thank you and praise you and pray that you will be glorified in this town, Lord, that you will just have your name exalted, that we will value you and the things of you, and that you will continue to bless us, Lord, to give you praise for everything that happens. Please bless this meeting and help the meeting to go exactly as you see best, Lord, that your will be accomplished not just now, but in every time that these leaders gather to accomplish your will here. Thank you so much, Lord. We love you and praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of July 6th, 2016. And Chief Reyna, would you lead us in the flag, Solomon?
Let us lead in, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for roll call, if you haven't met our new city manager, this is Alex Terazas, and he would love to meet you if you weren't at the reception and just walked in. And if he can ever help you with anything, he has assured me that he is going to try and do so. So, we welcome you again, Alex, to Los Manos, and thank you for making Los Manos your home. Okay, with that, let's go to Item 3, Roll Call. Director Maloney?
Faria.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Silvera.
Right.
Stonegrove.
Here.
Falalta. Here. We do have a forum. Let's go on to Item 4, Consideration of Approval of Agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Faria?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Faria, to approve the agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Introduction of New City Manager. Well, I beat it again, but I just have to tell you that it's a real honor to have Alex accept the position of city manager here in Los Manos. And again, he comes to us from the city of Truckee, California. And if any of you know Truckee, it is below freezing in winter and very nice in the summer. And so, he came here to where it's not so freezing in the winter, but, and very hot in the summer. So, we hope that, you know, you make Los Manos your home. And I have to tell you that with the City Council, it was a very good process. And working with these other four individuals up here was a real honor and joy, because I think we all saw the needs of Los Manos, and we were unified of basically the kind of person that we wanted to sit in that chair. And again, I want to say thank you to the City Council for the way you all conducted yourselves, we all conducted ourselves during the interviews, because it was very, very professional. It was very to the point. We knew what we wanted, and quite frankly, it made the job for the recruiter quite easy, from all the cooperation that we received from everyone. So, that's just as important. And last but not least, I want to thank the staff, because, and I'm sure council members will make comments later, in the absence of leadership, there can be confusion. But in the city of Los Manos, there was never an absence of leadership, and there was no confusion, because everyone pitched in to make sure that the job was being done in absence of a leader. We selected an interim city manager, City Manager Breezy, who is now Chief Breezy again, and has now been Commander Reyna now. And he did a wonderful job, along with all the staff members who pitched in to make sure that the city functioned correctly, it functioned the way it should, and it functioned without decisiveness. I mean, it functioned with people being very decisive, and being able to make decisions, and not stepping on anyone else's toes. So, it's a real tribute to the staff, because it's, sometimes that doesn't work. But in the city of Los Manos, it worked really well. Worked really well. Everyone pitched in, and everyone said, "We're going to make this city run, and it's going to run correctly." And it was just like no one really had left. So, again, staff, I can't thank you, all of you enough, for what you've done, and how everyone conducted themselves. It was just, it was just very, very nice. And now Alex is here, and we're very happy for that. And so, you've got a great staff to work with, Alex. Thank you. All right, let's go on to Presentations. Proclamation recognizing James Savage. Come on forward, James.
He's not tall yet, but he's mighty. I'll tell you right now. We honored, we honored this young man last year for his accomplishments and his swim from the shores of San Francisco to Alcatraz. Are there any sharks out there?
No.
You sure? They told the prisoners there were sharks out there. You didn't see any, though, right? Okay, all right. And last year, he completed the swim, and this year, you completed the swim, and you are the record holder for your age group. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. For the world, oh, for the world! Well, Mom will correct that. Okay, thank you. You know, we are, we are very, very proud of this young man. This young man, two years in a row, now has accomplished feats far beyond those of people older than you, younger than you, and there aren't many younger than you, I'll tell you right now. And so, as the mayor of Los Manos and the City Council, we are so proud to have you as a citizen of Los Manos. And we're looking for great things, and for you to accomplish even more, and I know you're going to do that. So, you've got a great set of parents, brothers and sisters, and we are very, very proud of you. I just want you to know that. So, you continue with the accomplishments. And I'd like to read this proclamation to you, if that's okay. Proclamation recognizing James Savage. Whereas on June 14th, 2016, nine-year-old James Savage set a record as the youngest swimmer to make the journey from Aquatic Park shoreline to Alcatraz Island and back in a touch-and-go swimming of a total distance of over two miles to San Francisco Bay. And whereas, over the last eight months, James Savage prepared for his challenge and spent countless hours with the help of his coach, Josh Weinberger, his teammate Emily Trejo, and his family, swimming mile after mile to Los Manos Creek Reservoir, and then joining his teammates at the daily swim practice with the Los Manos skimmers. On the morning of the swim, James Savage woke up at 2:00 a.m. to make the drive to San Francisco. He was confident, yet nervous, excited, yet scared, and did not want to disappoint anyone, especially himself. Just accomplishing that, James, you could never disappoint anyone. Just remember that. When James Savage entered the water, the tide was strong, and the winds were blowing hard, and the waves were pushing him further and further out. With the support of his swimming partners, his family friends, and even strangers, he pushed himself harder than he has ever pushed himself and made it to the rock. Whereas James Savage told himself to just keep swimming and pick up the pace, he was cheered on all the way back to the beach where he started a little over two hours earlier. He made it, and now on the task of finding a new goal to conquer. What's going to be your new goal?
I want to do a little bit of a search.
Whoa. Okay. I can't wait to see that one. Mom going to let you do it? She going to let you swim it?
No.
Okay. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Manos do hereby congratulate James Savage for setting a touch-and-go swimming record, and for the strength and determination and courage he showed in accomplishing his goal. And tonight, we honor this young man, James Savage. Congratulations. I'm sure the council would like to shake your hands, Allison. Nice work. You always shake the hand of the reporter, make sure he spells your name right. Well, here, I want to give you this, James, and it's for you, and thank you so much, and we're looking forward to seeing you again, okay? Thank you. Mom and Dad, good job. All right, let's go on to Item 7, Public Forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. And if you have a cellphone, would you please turn them off or place them on vibrate? Is there anyone else, is there anyone who would like to speak at the, I didn't even call anybody yet.
I knew you were going to.
Yeah, yeah.
In the interest of saving time.
Okay. Okay, so we already have someone here. Mike is yours.
Greg Hosteller, Los Manos, 923 Pacheco. I wanted to congratulate Mr. Savage. I have a friend of mine that lives in Truckee, California, and she swam from Aquatic Park to the island. She's a professional swimmer, so I know a little bit about what it is, and that's quite a test. There are not many people that can do that, so congratulations, yes. Good evening. I want to congratulate the City Council for their selection of their new city manager. I've seen and heard good things so far about their city manager, and I want to let the city manager know that he's welcome here in our community. He's been very well received so far, and that you've got an excellent staff to work with, probably one of the best staffs in the valley, as a matter of fact, all the way down through planning, and Police Department, and Fire Department, and Recreation Department. Got some great leaders here. So, and I want to welcome my wife Denise to the community also. And tonight, I want to speak just a few minutes about the three-by-two meeting that the city had with the school district, who I think those are good to have. I had some comments about based on things I read in the newspaper, which I wanted to clarify some things, and maybe enhance some things they had to say in the newspaper, because I think that moving our city forward is the right thing to do. And this council and staff has done a good job of doing that. Planning is a smart thing to do. Annexations are part of that. And smart people plan. And this city has done a great job of planning, and they're planning growth, and they've managed growth, and they've managed their infrastructure, and they've collected the appropriate fees for those. Annexation is part of planning, as I said, and we haven't done a lot of that, but annexation comes years before we see the end results of either housing, or whether it be commercial jobs, or it be industrial. It's all part of the puzzle. Timing is everything, and now is the right time before the demand gets here, so we don't have to do rush planning. We take our time, because we've taken years in the annexation and working on currently. We talk about fees. Fees are a very important part of that, and the city's done an excellent job of setting fees and managing their fees. By comparison, Merced County fees for a 1,634 square foot home are about $20,000. Merced City fees are $29,119. Los Manos fees are $47,378.75, behind Walmart and Target, where we're building four new model complexes. Of that, $19,887.96 are school fees, which is double the state law, which we agreed as builders and developers to provide to this school district, so we have appropriate funding for our schools. So, the city's done a good job. The fees have been, are being paid, so we have adequate funding, and the city has done the right thing in managing the overall annexations and the MAP entitlements. Pre-1984 fees, such as the house that I live in on Presidential Estates, were $1,200. And with that, now we have lighting and landscape districts in all post-1984 homes built, which we don't have in the homes where I live in Presidential. So, with that, I'd say that the city's done a good job. The school's done a good job in collecting their fees, and now it's time to execute and build those quality schools we need here, and I think they will do that. And I want to thank the city for the time here, and I wish all of you a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the, at the public forum?
Bertha Faria, Los Manos Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and welcome to our new city manager, Mr. Terazas. The Los Manos Chamber is happy to welcome Wink Lash Studio to membership with us. Wink Lash Studio is owned by Rebecca Escaville and is located at 1505 Rocket Club Drive. She offers safe and healthy lash extensions, as well as being a licensed esthetician and certified massage therapist. Appointments can be made by calling 535-1763. We had a great time at our third annual event celebrating Dad. This year, we moved it to downtown in the evening and promoted a classic car show, calling it Dad's Night Out. This will become the regular venue, as it was greatly received, and we were bursting at the seams with car show participants. We welcomed 48 cars to the show. It was so good to see Dad's enjoying the evening in the Chamber Beer Garden, chatting with the car owners, and even dancing to the live music. After a busy run at our fireworks sales, our board members and volunteers want to thank the community for supporting us, and your chamber is hopeful for a successful fundraiser to further enable us to continue to sponsor the community events that promote the quality of life that is Los Manos. Attitude in the Workplace is the topic for Merced College's July Customer Service Academy. Classes began today and will continue on July 13th at the AM session from 8:00 a.m. to 12:15, or the PM session from 1:00 p.m. to 5:15. As we look forward to the weekend, our member Hook &amp; Ladder Hot Wings will host the July Open Mic Night on Friday evening. Doors open at 6:30, and there is a $5 cover charge. Come out and enjoy an evening of musicians, poets, and comedians. Beginning on July 22nd, the Los Manos Arts Council and Los Manos Community Theater will present The Jungle Book, not the Disney version. Doors open at 6:30, with the show beginning at 7:00 p.m. on the 22nd, 23rd, 29th, and 30th. Don't miss your chance to see this production at the Ted Filasco Art Center. And in closing, our July Mixer will be hosted by Santos Ford on Thursday, July 28th, beginning at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level, and we'll go on to Item 8, Consideration of Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and revoted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 159896 through 160189, in the amount of $2,844,757.85. Measure P Oversight Committee Report. City Council Resolution Number 5760, adopting a revised budget for the 2016-2017 fiscal year budget as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the Community and Economic Development Department by $15,000 in relation to updating the Los Manos Airport Site Selection and Concept Study. City Council Resolution Number 5761, approving the quitclaim deed from the City of Los Manos to Bearden Family Limited Partnership for the seven-foot-wide Public Utilities easement for Assessor's Parcel Number 42412007, located along the northerly line of Mission Drive from North Mercy Springs Road to the existing Mission Drive cul-de-sac. City Council Resolution Number 5762, approving the quitclaim deed from the City of Los Manos to Bearden Family Limited Partnership for the Half Street Mission Drive right-of-way for APN 42412007, located along Mission Drive from North Mercy Springs Road to the existing Mission Drive cul-de-sac. City Council Resolution Number 5763, accepting a grant easement from Bearden Family Limited Partnership for APN 24212007, located along the Mission Drive cul-de-sac right-of-way and the North Mercy Springs Road right-of-way. City Council Resolution Number 5764, authorizing a word of construction contract for Mercy Springs sewer line replacement to Floyd Johnston Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $1,429,190. City Council Resolution Number 5765, authorizing a word of construction contract for F Street Stormline to McElveney, Inc., in the amount of $174,657.40. City Council Resolution Number 5766, approving the annual local transportation fund claim to be filed with Merced County Association of Governments for fiscal year 2016-2017 in the amount of $389,623. City Council Resolution Number 5767, authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Merced County Sheriff's Department for inmate transportation services. City Council Resolution Number 5768, approving professional services agreement for Municipal Code Enforcement Services, CSG Consultants, Inc., in amending the 2016-2017 fiscal year budget as it pertains to revenues and expenditures in the Community Development Block Grant Fund. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there anyone who wants an item removed? Mrs. Silvera?
Could you pull Item C for me, please?
Sure. Resolution 5760?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'd like to pull just for, just for explanation to let the public know what this is about, I and J. Okay, so if I could have a motion for the remainder?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item C and minus Item J.
And I.
Oh, I didn't hear I. I and J.
Okay, fantastic. Ms. Stonegrove?
Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Silvera, second by Stonegrove, to approve the consent agenda stated, minus Item C, I, and J. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go to C first.
Just really quick, and I didn't catch this before, but in the, in the consent agenda, it says $15,001,500 with three zeros. In the staff report, and maybe I'm just reading it wrong, it says $150,000?
The staff report is correct. It's $150,000, and so it's just an error on the agenda.
Okay, so then, we need to make that correction. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item C with the correction in the consent agenda to state $150,000 and not $15,000.
Sure. Okay. Do I have a second? Stonegrove?
Second.
Second. Okay, Ms. Stonegrove, second. Silvera made the motion for Item C on the consent agenda to correct 15 to 150, and seconded by Stonegrove. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. I don't have any questions, just explanation mark on I.
No problem at all. Every year, the Transportation and Development Act, out of that act comes some local transportation funds. It's called LTF, and that's distributed to transportation needs, and it starts with It's called LTF, and that's distributed to transportation needs, and it starts with mass transit, buses, and issues like that. And then it transfers over to the county and the cities if there's leftover funds that haven't been spent on the needs of the transit. And in the past, I'd say five years, this has been a zero number to the cities, because we, it has all gone to the bus and Yosemite Transit, because that's where it goes. This year, there was enough that it got distributed to the cities, and there's a distribution that shows it. And this year, we actually are looking for the $389,623, which is used in this fiscal year coming up, and it could be used for any road improvements, any repairs, anything that we do, and it's approved as long as it's in the roads. So, this is the first year, and I'm saying five years, and that's just a guess, that we've even had any money in the LTF. So, this is not a bonus, but in addition to what we budgeted also, so it will help that shrinking transportation fund that we set. This helps it this year, anyway.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good work. Okay, let's go on to J, and then we can approve both of, or K, I'm sorry, and approve it. City Council Resolution Number 5768. Again, no questions, just letting people know what's going on here. Stacy?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So, the city prepared a request for proposal for Municipal Code Enforcement Services, and we received one proposal from CSG Consultants, Inc. And we've been working with HCD, Housing and Community Development, it's the Department of the State of California, and their Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding, and so we're asking tonight that the city council would approve the professional service agreement with the City of Los Banas and CSG to provide those code enforcement services.
For an extra code enforcement?
Yes.
Yes.
They will be providing services within a specific census tract. That was all provided for you during the application process back in 2015, but that is our low-mod income census tract, and it will help eliminate slum and blight in that area.
Okay. Thank you so much. Bill, she wants to say a couple of words?
In case I missed it, I think we withheld Items C, I, and J. Is that, did I?
I and K.
I heard the J.
I think it was K. Did I say J?
I heard the J.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So...
I was looking at K and probably said J.
So, you've approved all of them except for I, J, and C, so in your motion to approve the rest of them?
We approved C. C we already approved.
Then you would do I and J.
I and J.
Okay.
Okay. Well, K is the one I wanted information on, so we've got that, that's fine. There was just, no questions, just wanted the public to know what was going on, getting extra money, and now extra code enforcement services. So with that, I would make a motion to approve Item I and Item J. Resolution Number 5766 and Resolution Number 5767. And do I have a second? Mrs. Silveira?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Veleto, second by Silveira, to approve Items I and J, as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to Item 9, Public Hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues. You or someone else raised at the public hearing, described herein or in written correspondence, delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 9A, Public Hearing, to receive public comment regarding the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, better known as the acronym JAG. And the recommendation is to receive the staff report, open a public hearing, close a public hearing, and no action to be taken, just an opportunity for public to comment. So with that, I'm going to go to Police Commander Reyna, still chief tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The JAG grant is something that we apply for every year. Last year, we received funding through the grant, we were able to purchase anti-auto theft devices, spike strips, just general equipment that we purchased. This year, we are applying for the grant, once again, the maximum amount that we may receive is $10,244. This year, we hope to replace our TASER devices. We purchased our current models in 2007, and they usually have about a five or six-year life on them. They require a lot of maintenance. We also want to purchase additional anti-auto theft devices with this grant. In last year's grant, we purchased these anti-auto theft devices in our ongoing efforts to reduce auto theft locally, and we held an event earlier, I believe it was last month, where we, we had a line of people outside of the police department, and we gave out a number of these devices. We had staff on hand, we, we provided training on how to use them, and we received a overwhelming response. So we want to do that again. We hope that we can reduce auto theft by purchasing these additional devices.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Any questions of Chief, before he sits down? Okay. Let's go to public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak on Item 9A, as read? Not seeing anyone, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and no action to be taken, just an opportunity for public comment. So, Chief, thank you so much. Okay, let's go on to Item B, Public Hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit to allow use of a Type 20 alcohol license for the off-sale of beer and wine at the 99-cent store located at 1209 West Pacheco Boulevard, APN 431141020. And we're going to go to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So the proposal tonight that we have before you is a request for a Type 20 alcohol license. This is for the off-sale of beer and wine for the 99-cent store, which has been in operation since May 25, 2016. The location of the store is 1209 West Pacheco Boulevard. It's highlighted for you in yellow in this aerial, and it's located on the southeast corner of Pacheco Boulevard and Ortigalita Road. It is located within the Ortigalita Plaza. North of this project site is the Los Banas Abattoir and undeveloped land. To the east is undeveloped commercial pads, also within the Ortigalita Plaza. South is some commercial retail, as well as some undeveloped pads. And to the west is the Stone Creek Plaza, also with some undeveloped commercial pads there as well. So according to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility. So, staff was able to make this determination, as the request involves the permitting and licensing of an existing structure, and involves no expansion at 1209 West Pacheco Boulevard. The census tract that this project is in is in 2301, and currently, there are nine on-sale licenses at this location. This census tract is highlighted for you in yellow on this aerial. Basically, the way that the city is divided into census tracts, the, this particular census tract holds a lot of our commercial property, and as you can see, it is bound by the city limits to the west, Pacheco Boulevard to the north, Mercy Springs Road to the east, and then Pioneer Road to the south. It's a very large census tract, and it encompasses a large amount of commercial properties. So, the addition of one more license to this census tract, staff does, has determined that it will not over-concentrate that census tract. So, according to our municipal code, there are several criteria that need to be made in order for the city council to approve a conditional use permit for alcohol. I'm not going to read them in detail, but there are three general findings that the city council must make. Then the municipal code requires four specific findings that are related to any conditional use permit for alcohol. And I, again, will not read that for you in detail, it's included for you in your staff report, and if you have any questions on those findings, just let me know. And this project was reviewed by the Planning Commission on June 8, 2016, and at that meeting, the city, the Planning Commission recommended approval of conditional use permit 2016-09 to the Los Banas City Council, subject to conditions of approval. So, public comment. Public hearing notice was published in the Los Banas Enterprise and mailed to the 300-foot radius on June 24, 2016, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution Number 5769, approving conditional use permit number 2016-09, for the use of a Type 20 alcohol license for the 99-cent-only store located at 1209 West Pacheco Boulevard. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions at this time, or to open up the public hearing? Okay. Let's go to the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on City Council Resolution Number 5769? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. City Council Resolution Number 5769, approving conditional use permit 2016-09 for the use of a Type 20 alcohol license for the off-sale of beer and wine, the 90, for the 99-cent store located at 1209 West Pacheco Boulevard. City Council, what's your pleasure, or do you have any comments? Ms. Furia?
I would go ahead and move to approve Resolution Number 5769, as read by title.
Okay. Do I have a second? Ms. Stonegrove?
Second.
Motion by Furia, second by Stonegrove, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5769, as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to Item C, Public Hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of conditional use permit to allow the use of a Type 20 alcohol license for the off-sale of beer and wine for Winddecker Incorporated Chevron Fuel Station, located at 2270 Pacheco Boulevard, APN 428160016. And we'll go back to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So this particular proposal, it's going to be very similar to the last conditional use permit that we reviewed. It's, again, for a Type 20 license. This is for the off-sale of beer and wine, and is for a location that will have a new Fresh Fill Convenience Store and Chevron Fuel Station. This particular proposal was presented to the Planning Commission with a site plan for the construction of the new convenience store and the fuel station with an automatic car wash. The convenience store consists of 4,288 square feet. It's also a 4,590-square-foot fuel station, 525-square-foot automatic car wash on 1.2 acres. The project is located at 2270 Pacheco Boulevard. This is the northwest corner of Pacheco and Ward Road. It's located within the College Plaza. To the north of the project site is a commercial pad with Village Liquor and Sherwin-Williams. Village Liquor has a Type 21 alcohol license, which is for general alcohol, off-sale. To the east is undeveloped commercial property. To the south is also undeveloped commercial property, and to the west is In Shape, as well as a commercial pad that has Verizon Wireless. The environmental analysis on this project, because it came forward with the site plan, staff evaluated the project under the context of the College Plaza, mitigated negative declaration, MND. This MND was certified by the city on March 14, 2001, and it was determined that the proposed project was adequately evaluated in the MND. Within that original environmental document, it was proposed that this corner would be a fuel station, so it had already been contemplated back in 2001. No further environmental documentation is required. So, the architecture and the elevations are not under consideration tonight, under the city council, but I did want to show you what the Planning Commission did approve and what will be built there at that corner. So this is the convenience store, the Fresh Fill, all sides of the elevations. This is just a glimpse of what the fuel station would look like. It'll have 16 pumps, and this is the automatic car wash, which will have a reclaim system for recycling water. So, again, the municipal code has three general criteria for conditional use permits, and these are three findings that must be made in order for the city council to approve conditional use permits. And then the code goes on to require specific findings. There's four of them for conditional use permits with alcohol. And those findings are within your staff report, and I, for the sake of time, won't go into those details. But staff has determined that this project does meet all of those findings. This project is within Census Tract 2302, and there are currently five licenses within this particular census tract. And it's highlighted for you in yellow here. It encompasses essentially the entire east side of the City of Los Banas. It is bound by Mercy Springs Road on the west side, Phillips Road on the south, and also Pacheco goes up, jogs up to Highway 152, Pacheco Boulevard, and then it reaches all the way up to Henry Miller Road. A lot of this is actually unincorporated land within Merced County, but it is still determined to be within this census tract. So the Planning Commission reviewed this request on June 8, 2016, and at that time, recommended approval of conditional use permit 2016-05 to the Los Banas City Council, subject to conditions of approval. Public comment, public hearing notices were published in the Los Banas Enterprise, and notices were mailed to the 300-foot radius on June 24, 2016. As of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution 5770, approving conditional use permit number 2016-05, for the use of a Type 20 alcohol license for Winddecker, Inc. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here. Winddecker, Inc. has representatives here, as well as their architect, Harry Hetty.
Okay. Let's take it back to council for a minute. Council, do you have any questions at this time? Okay. Let's open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on City Council Resolution Number 5770 this time? The applicant want to say anything? Okay. All right. I'll bring it back to anyone else? Okay. If there's no one else, I would like to close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. City Council Resolution Number 5770, approving a conditional use permit 2016-15 for the off-sale of beer and wine at Winddecker Incorporated, located in the northwest corner of Pacheco Boulevard and Ward Road. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, quickly, just a comment?
Sure.
And then a motion is, is I'm actually very happy that Winddecker's moving forward with putting the fueling station on that side of town. We do have quite a few residents out there, and they have to come across Mercy Springs to be able to get fuel, so I think it's a good move, and it sounds like back in 2001, they were already planning for that. So, good luck to them, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5770, as stated.
Mr. Furia? Second. Motion by Silveira, second by Furia, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5770. And before we vote, I've had a chance to, to not only review the plans, but to, to listen to Brian Rocha and what he's planning for this fueling station, and pretty much automated, and I'm very excited to see that, proponent of technology. So, continue to do what you're doing. Thank you. All right. With that, let's see. We had a motion by Silveira and second by Furia, is that correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to Item 10. Consideration of Inserting Flyers, English and Spanish, in the city's utility bills to inform citizens of the newly passed ordinance regarding garage sale registrations. And we'll go to Finance Director Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight, I have for you the cost analysis of inserting the garbage ordinance into the utility bills. And what I did was I received four different quotes from ABS, or, I'm sorry, that's no longer our vendor info send, and those costs range from $550 to $1,150, and they include four different options. One would be a half-page insert, both black and white, front and back, at $546. A full-page insert, front and back, black and white, at $632. A full-page insert, front and back, black and white, at $632. A full-page front and back with using colored paper but black ink at $747. And then a full-page front and back using color ink, we're allowed up to three colors for $1,138. So those are our four different options at this time if we want to move forward with the inserts. In the meantime, staff has taken the following steps to advertise the new ordinance. Flyers are located at various city buildings, including here at City Hall, at both the finance counter and the community development counter. Police and public works have also put out the informational flyer. The ordinance was posted on community development, fire, and police Facebook accounts. A slide was included in a channel 96 city informational rotation, and the information is also posted on the city's website. Code enforcement does intend to monitor the registration and clarify to see if there's any more need for any further education. And to date, I just checked today, and we have had 32 people register for their garage sales since we passed this ordinance. 12 were paper registrations, and 20 were online registrations. So tonight, we're just looking for direction from council on how to proceed.
Let me ask you, with the addition of a new code enforcement officer, what is your opinion when it comes to, because the code enforcement officer is going to be Wednesday through or Thursday through Sunday, is that? Stacy, let's talk about that first.
We are still working out the schedule. We, right now, we're as far as the professional service agreement, but we'll be working out the schedule with our police department. So Commander Raina, Commander Haddon will work that out with CSG, who has said that they will work any day of the week that the city should choose.
But wasn't that the intent to do on the weekend?
Yes, the intent is for the weekends and to be able to better get a handle on these garage sales.
Okay. And so then let me, I guess the point of my next question would be, what does staff think if, and how long, and when will this code enforcement person be on duty, you think? When will this happen?
When? Hopefully soon, within the next two weeks. That is though, subject to CDVG. Within the professional service agreement, it does say that CSG needs to be prepared within 15 days to be able to go ahead with the notice to proceed. But that is, like I said, subject to CDVG. They have reviewed our professional service agreement. They are the state of California, though, and they have their own process and their own checklist that we need to abide by to be able to ensure that we are following the grants guidelines. So as soon as we get that, they will be on board, I'm hoping, within 15 days or so.
Okay, because I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm in favor of sending this out, but I want to make sure that, you know, we're doing the right thing by sending it out. If we have code enforcement on the weekend and they assess that people aren't listening, then yeah, I think it needs to go out.
Yeah, that's definitely something that our current code enforcement officer and the new one coming on board would monitor and educate, use it as another tool to educate. So if they're out and they notice that somebody has a yard sale, obviously, they would check with them to have a permit the first time. I'm assuming it's a warning. And then they would give them also at that time the flyer to help educate them, probably hand them the paper registration as well, let them know that they could do it by either paper or online. And then the second time around, they would most likely get a ticket if they still failed to register.
Yeah.
So it's just another tool to educate.
It's not the money that, I think, it was always the money, but it's doing it at the right time to make sure that we get the most bang for this. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was the one that made the request to bring this forward and to look at how we can mitigate the problem that we have in Los Banos with the ubiquitous garage sales. The thing with the code enforcement officer or officers coming in under the CDVG grant is that it's a targeted area. And the sales are just all over Los Banos. It's not in any one particular area. I know there's been, in the report, there's been some recommendations of what our code enforcement department can do. I'm sure that our chief of police might have some other recommendations that he can come up with in regards to mitigating this, the problem. What I'd like to recommend that we consider perhaps is to see how this works out and maybe bring it back in 90 days and look at it to see if they're able to get this under control by means of not having to spend any money. But if it's out of control and it doesn't seem to be working, then perhaps the council can look at another means of advertising through putting information in the water bill. I know that, you know, in the body of this presentation, it indicates that, you know, there are some water bills that are going out, perhaps in some of the apartment areas where it's just going to be the apartment owner who gets the bill. But those sales are not as overwhelming as individual homes. So, and we do have a few during the week. I've seen them. But the majority of the sales are on the weekend. People are posting on our public property by pasting their locations on our public poles. And some people are using A-frames, you know, and not trying to deface the public property. But it's just a situation where it's gotten out of control and overwhelming. So, you know, I'm willing to allow staff to have the chance to try to work this out and see what they can come up with to control the problem, and perhaps bring it back in September around this time and see what they've been able to come up with as far as mitigating circumstance to control the garage sales and get people to register them as the city council has set forth in this ordinance.
So you want a little more time to see if the weekend code enforcement is going to work or not?
Well, I think the weekend code enforcement will probably work in the area that is designated because it's just a targeted area. But we still have garage sales that are further north of that area, as well as southeast of that area. So I would like to offer our police department an opportunity to see what they can do, and our staff in passing out the information and perhaps attaching it to water bills as people come into the city hall to pay for their utility bills, to see if this will help curb. And if they have questions, you know, maybe the staff can help them understand that, you know, it requires registration, be it here at city hall or online, in order to have four garage sales a year. So that would be my recommendation to move forward.
I like that.
I did leave out of the staff report, I talked at a different meeting about the message box that we had on the utility bill as that being an option. So we can still do that. It's a free option to us. It doesn't change anything. It's something that the city controls. And we'll just put a little message that states, don't forget to register your garage sale. Please call, visit us at city hall, or look on the website, just to see if that helps a little bit too in all of this.
Okay, so for the, council, you okay with that plan? Okay, all right, so it's just direction. So what we're going to do in, just to recap, the water bill with the built-in message will be, will have the message talking about the garage sales. And we will wait till September and get another report from staff, and then see if the actual letter needs to go out, now that we have some figures. But for right now, we're postponing that until we get more information. Everybody good? Okay, fantastic.
Do you want to formally continue to a date certain?
Yeah, we can formally continue at two. Good idea.
September 7.
September, September 7?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh.
Mrs. Lewis, would you make the recommendation then?
Just a moment.
Okay.
Check when the League of Cities, that's October.
Yeah, we're okay.
That's October, okay, yes. I'd like to make a recommendation to, to bring back, to have the city bring back the recommendation by Councilmember Lewis in regards to the garage sales. Let me just ask our city attorney, should it be stated just as read on the, on our agenda?
Yeah, I would just make the motion to bring back for status, Item 10 on this agenda.
Okay. Well, with that, I will make a motion to bring back Item Number 10 as stated on the agenda for September 7, for city council to make a decision and see what staff has done in regards to mitigation.
Okay, Mr. Faria? Second? Motion by Lewis, second by Faria, to revisit, to bring back Item 10 on September 7. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Advisory to public notices, we have one report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have actually a big public hearing item, a Presidential Estates East Area Plan and Annexation. It consists of a mitigated negative declaration, an annexation and pre-zone, and a general plan amendment, and a pre-annexation development agreement. The city council has considered this item back in October 2015, and based on discussion with the city council, the applicant has revised their project and has provided a general plan amendment, which also required revision of the environmental document. So the environmental document was revised and recirculated, and the Planning Commission will be reviewing these revisions on July 13, here in the council chambers at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, let's go on to our new city manager and his first report. Alex?
Just thank you for the warm welcome this afternoon and the reception. Thank you for the kind introduction, Mayor. Thank you, council, for the confidence. Looking forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, let's start with Mrs. Stonegrove.
Thank you. And I would just like to, again, welcome our new city manager. Alex Tarazas is here. We're very happy to have you here and anxious to start working with you. I know you've been here for a few days and have already hit the ground running. Really excited to see what can be accomplished in the years ahead. I think it's going to be a great combination to have you working with staff and look forward to the council working with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Faria?
Thank you. Once again, welcome, Alex. Welcome to Los Banos. Exciting times, lots going on now, and so we're looking forward to some exciting things. And I think it's a great time, great time to be in Los Banos. I was in, spent the last two weeks in Toronto, and it was very interesting to see. I got to visit with relatives and whatnot. By the way, there, if you, alcohol licenses, if you want to buy alcohol, you have to go either to the license, the alcohol store or the beer store. You can't get it at a gas station. And when they come out here, they're always very excited that they can actually buy their beer at the gas station. But along with their yo-yos. It was very interesting to be in Canada while, to see their news and to see how they view the United States, what's going on, and also the Brexit vote, which has a big influence, which is going to have a big effect on the world. And so also, I always, whenever I travel, I always get ideas, and I try to bring back everything that's good of these places I go, try to bring back to Los Banos so we can share. See, everything costs money, that's the big challenge, but things like town squares, community activities, parks, fully-staffed parks, water parks, those sorts of things you see in these communities, and we want to do all we can to bring that kind of thing to Los Banos. The more we can serve our people, our citizens, then the better town this becomes. It's already a great place to live and a great place to raise families. That's why families move here. And we're looking forward to the future with, future years with Alex here and council making this even better place, just continually improve and improve. I want to thank staff for keeping this city running very, very smoothly. We had a monumental success. The revenue sharing was a monumental success, and we're very pleased with that with the county. And we did that with an acting interim city manager, and that just shows you how effective a city can be when you have first-class staff at all your levels. So we very much appreciate it, and Alex, I know you're going to enjoy working with them very much.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo our city council members' welcoming of Alex. I'm excited also to work with him. I'm excited about some of his ideas about Los Banos and what he would like to see done. And I'd also like to thank the staff for being as professional as you are to carry on in the time that we didn't have a full-time city manager as hired and with our acting city manager. We didn't miss a beat, and it just shows you the level of personnel that we've hired in the city of Los Banos to conduct the business, and that our council can relax and know that they've done a superior job. Thank you to all, and to those who are not here tonight, I want to thank them as well as our department heads. So Alex, congratulations again, and you have hit the ground running, and I know you're going to do a good job. I'd like to, first of all, thank our fire department on, I believe it was June 18. My neighbor's house caught on fire at 11:30 at night, and he knocked on my door, and of course, I was reluctant to answer because, you know, it's a little bit frightening to have someone knock on your door at 11:30 at night in a frightening manner and ringing your doorbell. And so I looked out the door, and fortunately, he was facing me that I could see him, and he said, Deborah, call 911, my house is on fire and my phones aren't working. And our assistant fire chief and his staff came out that night and did a superior job of putting that fire out and the house not going down. So, and not only that, but there was a number of backup agencies that show up. I, you know, I didn't realize that that's how the process works. It's not just our fire department and ambulance, but there are other agencies that show up to assist our staff when a fire breaks out in our city. So thank you again to our fire department, to our chief for running such an efficient department. And I know that my neighbor is happy that his house didn't burn down, and even though it has to be gutted and everything has to be redone again, at least the structure is still there and in shape. I was hoping that Master Savage was going to stay with his family, and I spoke to him a little bit before our meeting, and I asked him, did he know anything about a gentleman named Jack LaLanne? Well, of course, he's too young to know who Jack LaLanne is, and a lot of you out there don't know who he is.
Yeah, I'm too young, too.
But Jack LaLanne swam to Alcatraz when he was 60, handcuffed. But this young man has the world record, and Jack LaLanne wanted to swim that again when he was 90, but it didn't happen. He died at age 93, I think it was. But this man was a bodybuilder and an exercise guru and the whole nine yards, and this young man was able to accomplish such a feat. It's absolutely amazing. So we have something to be very proud of here in the city of Los Banos, having our young kids accomplish such a feat and end up in the world's record book with a record showing that he's able to accomplish swimming to Alcatraz. So again, hats off to Master Savage, and that's my report for this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I want to echo a lot of the comments that the rest of the council's made. So Alex, congratulations. I know we got to meet with you last Friday, and we had a pretty good discussion, I thought, and so I'm just glad that you're going to hit the ground running. We've got a lot of exciting things, I think, coming up, and hopefully, we can make the right decisions, man. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank the chamber. Dad's Night Out was exceptional, it was a lot of fun. It was a cool night. The weather cooperated and had a great time. And please, continue with the different, trying the different events. It brings people together downtown. It's, you know, people off the highway have stopped by, and I heard you ran out of room for cars. So next year, it's going to expand and be even bigger. So I'm glad to hear that. I hear there's going to be a farm-to-table event where we're going to close off downtown and have a great big banquet table downtown. Yeah, I mean, I'm amazed at the ideas that people are coming up with, so thank you, and please continue with that. you, and please continue with that and how we can help, because it's, it's important. So, so just make an appointment with this guy and, and tell him exactly, you know, everything that you're planning. So I think it's absolutely wonderful, and please continue, and please keep coming up with the ideas. Open mic night, that's something else that was started, and you'd be amazed at the talent in this town. Young, middle, and a little older. And I would encourage you to, to attend these open mic nights. They happen at different restaurants. It's another way for people to get together during the evening. I'm thoroughly impressed and just, just overjoyed that, that these events are happening. So again, continue with those also. The, I want to tell you tonight, I want to end this with a sour note, but it's not a sour note, but those four little words that cause so much discussion at this council, RTIF, R-T-I-F. And I remember that we debated night after night after night after night, talking about that, or whether to keep it or to get rid of it. Last night, the Merced City Council, by a vote of 4 to 2, suspended the RTIF for two years. So it no longer exists in the city of Merced. Livingston, the week before, they suspended the RTIF permanently, and Dos Palos and Los Banos. So the, the only cities that have it right now are Gustine, Antwater, and the, and the county have it. So I don't know what's going to happen with them, but, but this last meeting, Steve Carrigan made the recommendation to, to suspend the RTIF for two years. So with that, congratulations to, to James Savage. Monumental accomplishment to swim from the shores of San Francisco to Alcatraz and back. And it's just, it's just an example of the kind of talent we have in this town physically and also educationally, and the number of people that stand out, that have gone to college, that have excelled in sports. And it's just a small percentage of what really occurs in Los Banos. If you're in education, like the three of us, two of you currently are, and one retired, you see the talent that's coming up. And, and you know what you have, and you know what this town has produced. It's a, it's a good town, and for those who don't want to make it a good town, we need to find other avenues for them to either conform or not be here. One of the two. So I am, I'm very pleased with, with what I see, and let's continue to make this a better place to live. So with that, for the final comment, but I'm sure not the final comment, Alex, welcome, and let us know if there's anything we can do for you. Okay. With that, let's see, there's no closed session or anything, so I can adjourn. All right. So with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at 8:09.